Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
She said if they can't figure out the audio, we'll go Facebook Live a little bit.
Okay.
Louie and Janice, we're going to go Facebook Live in a couple of minutes because the audio is not working on the YouTube channel for some reason. So we'll let you know here in just a second.
Thanks.
We're counting on you.
There's a thirty second delay that I know was not working on YouTube Live, so we need to get it back. And this is a debate, he's the captain of the esports team, you know what just happened?
So we just emerged victorious on our first match against Grace County, we went fifty-three to fifteen.
Awesome, yes. Good job.
I missed that. What are y'all clapping about?
We just had one of our esports team members came in and told us they just defeated their opponent tonight, so we were celebrating that. So I think we're good, the audio is good, and Angie, if you want to get this going, we're ready to roll.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to our live stream school board meeting. Like to call this meeting to order. Everyone's had a chance to look over the agenda, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda, do I hear a motion?
I do, Janice Shepherd.
Janice, do I hear a second?
Louie, second.
Louie, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If you've had a chance to look over the minutes from our last meeting on September fifteenth, I need to approve those minutes from that regular board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So move Sharon.
Sharon, do I hear a second?
Second Ricky.
Second Ricky, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Move along to item D showcases and recognitions, I'll turn the time over to Mr. McCully for that.
Cool, at this time, we want to showcase and recognize a group here in town with the Bourbon County Extension Office for the following people that created and donated over eight hundred reusable masks for our district. So I want to publicly thank Kay Dennison, Sharon Crump, Teresa Fritz, Sherry Snyder, Eileen Stewart, Terry Vess, Chris Maybrier, Alice Turley, Patty Justice, Cheryl Royalty, Ginger Hafer, Tracy Richter, Trish Bryant, Shirley Gentry, Peggy Mitchell, Frances Stokes, Ken Flannery, Becky Winburne, and Pat Holland. So we want to definitely thank that group for eight hundred masks.
Awesome, thank you. Going to move along to item E, department and superintendent's reports. Um, anybody that looked at their board pocket, was able to see personnel actions, Mr. McCully, did you have anything you need to add or inform? Okay. Then we'll move along to B, approve bills, salaries, and wages. Has everybody had a chance to look those over? If you have, do you see any questions or concerns? Okay, so I need a motion to approve bills, salaries, and wages.
Louie, you have an answer, approve.
Louie, motion, a second?
Ricky, second.
Uh Ricky? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approve the treasurer's report, has everybody had an opportunity to check out the treasurer's report? Have any questions about any of that? If not?
I wanted Martha to interject something here, there was, we did, we had an update for that as far as our CARES funding and what we're paying our general funds. Martha, if you want to unmute there and you can, okay.
Is that? Okay. I mainly here, in case you looked at the bank statement for the general fund, if you noticed that any balance for that particular statement was not in the black. For the first time I've ever seen it. But this is very unusual circumstances. The treasurer's report gives you a little more accurate picture because there is money in two money markets. All this, all these funds are in Munis, when you get reports from Munis, when I worked up the one for the treasurer's report. I did have to here in October for the Fund One, the one that's called Fund One Money Market, I moved about seventy thousand to the general fund account because the federal government didn't, hadn't their part for the QZAP project, they're behind. So the bank, the Mellon Bank, was requiring that payment be made. And it made it even thinner in the account than I truly like. So I did shift some funds for that, and hopefully in October, I can move the funding back. I have been to more than one meeting that said that the end of September is when any school is its brokest. And they don't like using that verbiage, but it's a true thing. You start generating your property tax revenues in October, you may get a change in your SEEK in October depending on your number of children, your ADA free children for the report card that was filled out. I think it will be okay with the general fund, we talked about the general fund budget today in the monthly meeting. And it, I look at kind of like the bottom line for the whole general fund, and it's strolling around thirty thousand dollars behind what we had for last year. But the COVID expenses are running at the end of September about seventy-two thousand. I mean, I didn't get an accurate count on what was paid in October for COVID. But that, the general fund is absorbing for right now until we can get FEMA money.
And that's, and I'll, I'll interject something there, the reason we were not, originally we had planned on using the CARES funding to help make a lot of those payments for stuff that we use for sanitizer and different PPE. But we found out that we, if you use CARES funds, you can't use, you can't apply for FEMA reimbursement. So right now, we're paying everything out of the general fund, the seventy, seventy-two thousand dollars plus for all the PPE we've paid for, some of the positions we've paid for. We're going to attempt to get FEMA reimbursement, so due to that fact, we haven't touched any of the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of CARES money. We'll have, so that money's untouched, so we're going to apply for all this reimbursement, whatever we do not get reimbursed will come out of the CARES money. So that's just a shuffling, I guess, of you will, of the funds to make sure that we're in the best spot for potential reimbursement. I hope that makes sense, I just want to be transparent, because that's why there was that dip, not only is this the low time where we would have money, we're also paying out tens of thousands of dollars that we would normally use CARES funds for to pay for it. So we're still in a very good financial position, as strong as we've been in years, but I just want to be transparent about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, I'm a little bit of a talker here about this, trying to explain it, if they had any questions about what they saw or?
So we've not received any reimbursement from FEMA yet, I know they reimburse you at seventy-five percent of what you submit, right? If they deem it necessary, we've not received any money yet.
Now, we've submitted our first round of reimbursement, and we're waiting for that to process. So the past, that's been a long process to get reimbursement, but we believe this will be, hopefully it'll be faster, we've got better communication from them than we've had in the past, so we're optimistic that we'll get it sooner, but no, we haven't gotten any reimbursement yet. We believe much of what we're submitting will be reimbursed at the seventy-five percent, but we don't know that. So that's why we set those CARES funds to absorb any not reimbursed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mrs. Moore?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So do I hear a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So move Janice Shepherd.
Janice, motion, do I hear a second?
Second Sharon.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to D, Mr. McCully, do you have any expense reports that you need to report tonight?
I had a gas to Louisville and then like two trips, one to Louisville, one to Lexington.
Okay. That's good, so we need a motion to approve the superintendent's expenses, do I hear a motion?
Louie, you have a motion.
Louie made the motion, do I hear a second? Ricky, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, this public comment, as everyone knows that's watching in here that if there's any public comments need to be made, you have to let Ms. Graves know by three o'clock. Jennifer, do we have any public comments for this meeting?
Just have the people who are in person, in-person presentations tonight, but no other public comment on email tonight for this meeting.
All right, thank you. Then let's move along to the public comment, we have A, Compass Municipal Advisors. And I believe we have someone here that's going to talk to us about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, guests tonight. My name is Anthony Strong, I'm with Compass Municipal Advisors, and I work in the Business Development Department with our company. A little bit about my background, and I know I've met some of you and trained some of you before, I'm a former school superintendent, most recently retired from Pendleton County just north of here three years ago, and for the last three years, I've been working in municipal advisory work, helping school districts and boards trying to accomplish the things that they want to accomplish. Had opportunity to talk to Mr. McCully about our company and the work that we do, and tonight, we're going to make a presentation, kind of a two-part. One, I'm going to give a kind of a firm overview and history of our company and what we do, and what I think makes us stand out differently than our competition. And then Keith Brock is going to get into more of the details about your bond indebtedness and the things that you have going on here and some recommendations that we have for, for you and the district, if you select us to be your municipal advisor. So you've got a PowerPoint or a presentation there that we just gave you, the board members, so you're just going to turn to the first page, I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to hit some highlights, the things that I think are important, if you look on page two, we're just going to start with a firm background. Compass is an independent advisory firm, that means we work for our clients and work for the customers, our school districts and other clients that we've worked with. We have offices in Lexington and in Columbia, South Carolina, and our team has been in the business over thirty years in terms of doing municipal advisory work. We work with school districts, we work with county governments, cities, extension districts, you name it, public entities, we work with that in Kentucky. Basically doing financial capital planning, debt issuance, and then investment management services for that. We turn on to page three, a little bit about our experience. Our advisory team total, the members of the team have a combined one hundred years of experience in doing this type of work. That is why we were the number one independent advisor in the state of Kentucky since two thousand twelve, and we've been a leading advisor in South Carolina since two thousand two. A little bit about the work we've done, we've done over twenty-five billion dollars in funding and issuances for entities, and that's over twelve hundred issues. In addition to the financial people, we've got a former legislator in RJ Palmer, who's with us on the back, senior vice president that works for our company. I'm former school superintendent, so in addition to the people with the financial background and experience for a school district, we've got people on staff that have worked in school districts, worked in the legislature, it can kind of combine the whole picture in terms of everything that we do that would make it beneficial for our school district. On the next page, page four, is a client map of the state of Kentucky. If you look at that map, it says we have a hundred and eight entities that we represent. If you look at that, kind of did a little number count today, we do business in seventy of the one hundred and twenty counties with the work that we do. That's about fifty-eight percent of the state that we work in through some type of bond issuance or whatever. The shaded darker areas are actually county government that we do, the red dots would either represent the other districts or schools or cities, entities that we work with. So we are involved all across the state. Second map is our South Carolina map, seventy to seventy-nine school districts in the state of South Carolina use Compass. So that's right at eighty-nine percent of the school district market that we have in schools in South Carolina. So we have done and do a lot of school business. Page six of the presentation just kind of gives you a comparison of other districts that are similar in size to Paris Independent that we do, some in South Carolina, some in Kentucky, and some of the things that we did, we did the comparison based on our budget and based on your ADA. So just kind of show you, we work with districts, all different sizes in what we do. The next page, page seven, talking about the role of the financial advisor. And this is a part of the presentation that I get excited about as a former superintendent. As superintendent, and I was superintendent for fourteen years, and in a district a little bit larger than, than Paris and Pendleton County and Campbell County, which is about twice the size of Pembroke. When we were looking to do a project or trying to find out about bonding, you know, the old way of doing it eighteen years ago is you called your advisor and said, I want to, I want to build something, how much money do I have? And, you know, that standpoint of, it kind of takes you to the point where you would call and they'd say, well, you can, you can bond five million dollars, you might bond ten million, or you maybe only can bond a million. Well, in the way we work with our districts and our clients, if you look on page seven there, we deal from the planning, the execution, and the post-issuance in terms of how we do that. And planning, I think, and go over to page eight, is where we stand apart from everyone else, is that, you know, we like to come in about the point where you're at now, when you're looking at your facility plan, you're looking at making some, some changes or doing some work, and to start to work with whatever team that the board and the superintendent decide to get, put together, so if it's the finance officer, the superintendent and the board, or if it's the facility direct person and the superintendent, maybe some board members, whatever fits Paris is what we want to work with. So we would come in initially and sit down with, with you, sit down with your facility plan, sit down with what you've already got indebted to your bond payments that you're already making, and look at that facility plan and ask you questions, you know, where, where do you want to be this year, five years down the road, ten years down the road? And try to map out a strategy in terms of the resources that you have to be able to do this. And this is not something that's common in this marketplace with these type of firms that do that. So as a retired superintendent, I get excited, and it's the part I like to share with superintendents, is that, you know, a lot of times superintendents don't have a lot of experience in bonding or building, they're more instructional oriented or whatever, so. So this gives you an extra person or a group to work with you in helping plan and accomplish those things. So, you know, I mentioned the points mostly on slide eight, that, you know, trying to structure it in a way that we understand what you're doing and make that plan. The other piece about the plan, and you're listening to your finance officer, you know, having been a superintendent for fourteen years, you know, those things happen where balances go up and down. And one of the things that we do in the plan is that we want to make sure that we're not developing a plan that straps you so much that you don't have some flexibility. Because we all know there's that period of time where a roof may need to be replaced, or you got to replace the HVAC system, or you need a new gym floor, or things that you don't really, you know, I mean, you know they're going to happen, but they kind of, normally that kind of stuff is kind of like at your home, when your toilet goes out, you know, you're planning on it, but you got to be able to fix it. So to do that kind of flexibility piece is another part that we think is important. And then also the piece of, you know, we want to be here as your partner and, you know, regardless of how we come forward, you know, we will come out yearly, meet with the board, present where your indebtedness is, we call it debt day, to share with you. So as you're making improvements, reducing debt, increasing bonding, we will come out and be a part of that and share that with your meeting annually, whenever the board and the superintendent would want that to happen. Page nine talks about the marketing and execution. As an independent advisor, we work for the school district. We're not working for the investor, we're not working for an underwriter. We're helping you sell your bonds and get those out of the market. So we want you to get out, we want to get as many bidders or buyers in the marketplace so that you get the best rate possible, so you can get that money as cheaply as you can. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, as we all know, I mean, that market is investor-driven. So we're going to make sure that we're marketing out there and working. The fact that we do so much business in South Carolina, that helps us to attract bidders to our issues in Kentucky as well. You know, most of the time, state of Kentucky, a school issue because it's guaranteed by the state, may have anywhere from two to four bidders. And for a bond issue, and, you know, we have this year consistently in all of our issues, averaged over six bidders on a bond issue. So we feel like our strength in both states helps bring to you a benefit from being able to do that. If you look at page ten, again, this is kind of a little more about that advisory service. If you look at the chart to the right and kind of, again, making the point where an independent advisor is a stronger person for a district in that these, this chart on the right-hand side, RW Baird, Hiller Line, some of those other companies, if you use municipal advisor, there's also a broker dealer, that takes them out of the market of being able to advise you. Now, you've never used Baird, but, you know, last year or the last sixty-nine transactions, they participated in buying thirty-one of them. Well, they couldn't have bid on your projects if they'd been your advisor. We don't have that issue because we're not a broker dealer, we're just an advisor. So we're getting out to every one of those companies on that list, letting them know that when you sell bonds, that you've got the ability, that you've got an issue, we tell them about the district, we market it, we get it out there and we work with the district to make sure that that happens. So there's no conflicts with us, with any regulatory groups or whatever. Page eleven is a good example of an issue that we just did. There's a South Carolina issue, it's over sixteen million dollars, we had eleven bidders. And you can look at those interest rates, Baird was a buyer on that, but look at the interest rate between point seven-three percent and point nine-eight. So, you know, having a strong bidding group helps reduce your cost of money so that you get more money for your project in terms of what you're doing. And again, being an independent advisor, we are able to do that. The post-issue piece, after we planned it and we marketed and sold it, you know, we will help you with investing any bond proceeds for a period of time, maybe before you spend them for the project. Again, throughout the year, we're monitoring your debt profile, making sure that we're on top of that, letting superintendent finance officer know, staying involved with the capital project, SEEK, SFCC, legislative updates, those are all things that we do as part of our service to the district. And the one thing I'll point out is that when we work, I mean, when we're employed as an advisor, the only time that we get paid is when we do a bond issue. So if you hire us this evening and we come onboard, and we work for you for four years, and we've not sold the bond, all this work that we've talked about with the planning and everything going into it, we're going to do that without drawing a check until we help you sell the bond. So there are no fees or anything associated with that until we get to the point that we're going to be able to sell bonds or help get you some money. Number, slide thirteen is a picture of a client portal, one of the things that we do for our new clients when we bring them onboard, is we develop this online portal. Probably to use board members, it doesn't mean as much or something that you would use, but it pulls together all of your bond issue documents, it pulls together all of the BG ones, I know you're doing one tonight on your roofing project, but all the BGs associated with that bond issue, your payment schedules, a copy of your resolutions, everything for each issue is on there. And more that's helpful is that whether it's your finance officer, maybe sometime somebody with facilities, or superintendent to find that information, all that's in one spot. And that's a place where we can get people logins, even your auditor when they come in and they want a full bond issues, they want to look at payment schedules. Your finance officer can give that to your auditor to be able to share that information as well. So any questions about this part of the presentation? I know I went through it very quickly, but you got a copy of it, and there's a lot in there that you can read and pick up on before I turn it over to Keith. Questions?
Thank you all. I need to sit down here so I can be seen a little shorter than Anthony here. So he talked a lot about the planning aspect of what we do, and so I'm going to talk a little bit to the numbers and specifically you all directly. And so when we do that, if you're on page fourteen of the, I think it's page fourteen of the presentation, we kind of start with a snapshot of where you are today. And so on page fourteen, you can just see a list of your outstanding debt. And kind of going from left to right, you can kind of see the issuance date, who bought those bonds, the underwriter, the original farm out, what's currently outstanding today, and then what's the appropriate, or the, excuse me, the approximate percentage of payments owed by the district, meaning is SFCC paying it, or is the district paying it? The current interest rate range, and its final maturity, and then what we refer to as call information, or when can those bonds be refunded for possible savings opportunities? And so you can see approximately ten-point-one million outstanding incurred debt for the district. But I guess we've kind of highlighted the two thousand and sixteen issue because it's a little bit of a unique situation here for you all, and we'll get into some of that in a minute in more detail. But that deal was originally an energy savings project whereby a portion of those district payments were to be earmarked or come from essentially the benefit or the savings from the energy program through the general fund. So we'll get into a little bit of that here on page fifteen. So for the visual folks out there, page fifteen is a graphic illustration of the district's debt profile. And so the bars represent those issues that we discussed, the district's portion of those payments. But if you look at the, kind of the top two bars in the stack, those represent the energy bond payments. And the lighter shaded color on the top are the energy payments that were originally set to be paid from the general fund. So you can see that those payments escalate over time, which is somewhat of a unique situation for a school district. We typically see those payments decreasing over time because the black line in the middle there represents your funds available, or your restricted funds available for debt service. And so the difference between the line and the bars is what would be your debt capacity or bonding potential. And because of the impact of the escalation of those payments over time, that has a, limits your ability from a bonding perspective going forward. So if you flip to the next page, page sixteen, this is a breakdown really of the graph in a numerical fashion, and so you can see your restricted funds or the funds that are typically earmarked for debt service, you know, or your capital outlay, your nickel, the state match on the nickel. And so that adds up to your total funds available for debt service. And you can see in column F, that's the total of all those payments over time, where currently we're at about three hundred and ten thousand in debt payments. That escalates and peaks in twenty thirty-six to four hundred and thirty-two thousand, which creates a shortfall within those restricted funds is the issue. And you can see that shortfall kind of starts in really fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, and peaks again when that debt is paid off in twenty thirty-six. So again, it's a little bit of an unusual situation, and when we think about planning, you know, we got to start thinking today about how we're going to address those issues in outward years, right? And start positioning yourself around the, both, you know, your general fund component, but also your capital needs. And so we've kind of started that process preliminarily and thinking, okay, what are some basic solutions to that situation? And really, there's probably hybrids in between, but on a basic kind of scenario, you can utilize your general fund monies to cover those shortfalls in the outward years. But what that ends up doing is putting a lot of pressure on your general fund, and it also limits your ability, as Anthony mentioned earlier, about trying to leave wiggle room for those kind of unknown events that may happen where you need to spend some money on capital improvements. You know, if you're using the general fund, you've already drained those restricted fund dollars and you've really, you have no real debt capacity until that debt rolls off in twenty thirty-six. And so your bonding potential is going to be limited to primarily SFCC offers of assistance, you know, between now and that period of time, whatever those amounts may end up being. And so on page eighteen, we've kind of numerically showed you what those dollars look like on the shortfall side, you know, based upon today's current restricted fund balances. And so you can see originally, you know, it was planned that two-point-three million dollars from the general fund would be used to offset those bond payments. But if you use all of your restricted dollars, your shortfall is about seven hundred and seventeen thousand over the remaining life of the issue. And obviously, that's, those calculations are as of today, based upon your current restricted funds and, you know, current debt structure. Page nineteen, I won't get into all this in a whole lot of detail. Really, this is, you know, kind of, well, if you want to look at general fund as a potential source of absorbing those payments, then you got to think towards how are you going to long-term plan your general fund to cover those extra costs? And, you know, this is a five-year look back at the general fund. You know, we kind of boxed the debt service number, you can see that's increasing over time and would only continue to increase as those bond payments are escalating, you know, till towards twenty thirty-six. I've also put a box around the transfers in, you know, really those payments started kicking in in twenty seventeen, and that's when you started using those restricted funds were coming in from the capital outlay and building fund to cover in part those debt payments. And so any, in trying to utilize general fund to cover those debt payments, you know, in our view, requires some really long-term planning, but it's also kind of a situation that really limits you, your ability and your flexibility within the general fund as, you know, we're well aware, costs continue to go up, you've got COVID expenses that, you know, how long are we going to be dealing with this and so forth? But we wanted to kind of at least share some basic information on the general fund with you. The next couple of slides talk about another alternative, which is really the recallable nickel, you know, the levying that extra nickel with the possibility of the state match, or looking at it from a historical perspective on how the state matches those dollars. You know, if that was an option that wanted to be explored, you know, we kind of did some preliminary analysis on that. You know, the nickel creates, it covers those payments, so you would no longer have to be utilizing the general fund to support them, and also creates approximately four, four-point-one to four-and-a-half million in bonding potential, depending on how, what kind of interest rate assumption you are looking at and what period of time, you know, you may be considering the nickel. Again, that assumes the state matching based upon historical rates. You know, just to give you some perspective of the bonding potential, you know, if you use the general fund as planned and did the nickel, it's about five-point-eight million. So, you know, the difference is roughly a couple million dollars there, just to give you some perspective of the ranges. You know, Compass has a lot of experience with referendums and nickels, and, you know, we've done probably about a billion dollars or so worth of referendum-type projects. You know, we really, if that was something y'all want to pursue, we would walk you through the whole process. And we've done everything from very simple analysis to the board, all the way to, and I wasn't aware of this until just a few days ago, we did a YouTube video for a client as part of a marketing effort. So we really are there to kind of walk through that whole process with you, should you need to. Page twenty-one just kind of shows you mathematically kind of the story behind that bonding potential and the nickel. So as you can see, this is a layout of the restricted funds again, with your capital outlay and your original nickel. In the box in columns E and F are the estimates of the potential recallable and the dollars that are created off of that. And so you can see in column I, when you add all those together, you generate cash flow, which is the basis of that bonding potential. Lot of, lot of numbers, a lot of moving parts here, but again, we're just trying to give you a little indication of some of the planning that we think can be beneficial over time. You know, when you start thinking about your current situation, and then you got to layer in, as Anthony mentioned earlier, the different capital needs that you may have, trying to prioritize those needs, and then trying to work into a solution that fits you all. And we recognize this isn't a one-size-fits-all kind of approach. And so, you know, we try to look at your goals and objectives specifically, and then try to tailor a strategy to help you execute it. We're also aware that most districts have more needs than they have resources, and so that prioritization can be challenging. You know, we can't necessarily wave a magic wand and fix everything, but, you know, we're big believers in that planning process and trying to walk you through that kind of each step of the way. And I think the last page here, I think, is the peer group analysis, just to give you some basic comparison, we did a brief analysis, just kind of show you kind of where you look and rank on several categories related to not only all school districts in Kentucky, but independent school districts as well. And so we've provided some of that data. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. Now, I've gone through that probably as fast as Anthony, but.
If we enter into a contract with you all, how long would that initial contract be for? One year, two, five?
As long as you all want to keep working with us. So at any point in time, y'all can cancel out of the contract. It's not binding.
Okay. If you have questions, can someone come to us, or would we need to go to your office in Frankfurt or South Carolina?
We are accessible to you, just as quick as a phone call or an email. Like I said, we would, as part of that, come out every, you know, once a year anyway, to bring aboard an update on that. But it's great to do it, what's researched you're doing, how much you pay it off and do that. But anytime, you know, superintendent, I'm pretty accessible. But anytime, you know, to predict, say, I'm pretty accessible by phone, being a new superintendent. I had to learn how to turn off the email on my phone. So, I mean, I answer emails and calls all day, some hours of the night. So, so we're, we're accessible from this day.
Okay. I'm really interested in the recallable nickel solution. I think that's, I think that's a direction that we all be looking at going into. I think our superintendent and board would agree with that.
There was something from what Keith laid out to accomplish and to relieve your general fund of some debt obligations you have in that energy project and to look forward to an accumulation of bonding potential. That's probably your best and easiest route.
Because, I mean, it really does raise the amount that you can bond.
And the match is critical on that as well because of the way those escalating payments, right? It puts pressure in those outward years. And so, yeah, I mean, it generates a substantial amount.
I have a question, this Louis Emmons, board member.
Does anybody else have any other questions, Louis or Janice?
Yeah, I got a question. Yeah, Louis Emmons. Question is, you know, I see all these interest rates kind of, some of them kind of high, some kind of low. Is there potential to consolidate some of these bonds and do a lower, lower interest rates? Do you see that as a, as a viable means to lowering our tax, our interest over a period of time?
Yes, I'm trying to flip to the slide. Can't seem to find it here, fourteen? There we go. Yeah, so the, so the, if you kind of go through that from that, that perspective in mind, you know, your first issue there is a very small amount outstanding with a fairly short maturity, the series two thousand and ten, which is currently callable. But it's a hundred percent backed by the SSCC. So the SSCC will let you realize whatever savings you can get from that. But it's not cash, it's going to be forwarded into the next offer. So you don't realize that until you're actually doing another project. The, the second issue, which is, has a fairly high interest rate range. It's a little misleading and we probably should footnote it because it's, it's the Cuse Abbott, the finance officer we're speaking to earlier, that it gets a federal tax credit back. So there's really, not to get into all the details, but because of that credit and because you're investing those payments on an annualized basis, you're basically locked in, which is effectively a zero percent borrowing rate. So there's not a ton of benefit in that. The, really, the next issue that's callable in June of twenty twenty-six. So when you look at that call date, the closer you get to the call date, the more likely there is to generate savings, assuming rates are still lower. That's actually probably your next real opportunity to realize any interest rate savings. With the high end of that issue being at three percent was one of the things that we actually talked about. It was, I didn't get into it tonight, but one of the things that could be possible is to restructure that deal, depending on, you know, what y'all wanted to do with the potential nickel or with the general fund, to try to help take some of that savings that could be generated closer to twenty twenty-six. And that's coincides with when that shortfall hits, to try to restructure that, take that savings and try to limit some of that burden in those outward years. But, but your point's a valid point, rates are fairly low right now. It's just the way that your debt and the timing of it, there's just not a ton of benefit to you currently today.
And part of it is ten-year bond, maybe you explained that, like a traditional bond, you had to wait ten years before you can refund it.
Correct, I mean, that's, that's basically industry standards. So that's the call information in column H are those dates. And that, we put those in there because we use this as our tool to track these as well for savings opportunities. But traditionally, a municipal bond is issued for schools for twenty years and at a fixed rate. And so the district has the option to refinance it and pay off those bonds with no penalty at the ten-year mark. And so you have some options to do it sooner than that as well. But the closer you get to that payoff date is really when the savings materializes. I don't know if I explained that as, as simple enough.
I think, I think so, because I mean, the issue being is that would be something that, when we come out every year, we would be monitoring that. And when you got to a point where there was an advance to do that, we would share it to superintendent to let you know that. And that's part of that planning process.
So as our agent, you would, you would shop for us the best rate possible? And where we see those variable rates, you could actually ask for fixed rates that would get us closer to where we need to be, correct?
Essentially, yes, that's correct. I mean, these, these are fixed rates. The ranges represent different maturity dates within the overall bond issue. But yes, the, the process as your agent, we represent you. We competitively sell the debt in the market per, per state law. So it is definitely a competitive process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, we have a second question again, if there's one of the questions. It's just that as part of our commitment to, you know, break our service to the clients on your first issue, if over two million dollars, you know, we would reduce our fee by fifty percent on that bond issue. So we're giving a fifty percent discount on our fees. And our fees are like, you know, when you build a project architect, KD sets the key structure for architects. They have the key structures set for municipal advisors. And we have the ability to adjust that. So we would be, we would want it to be over a two million dollar issue because there wouldn't be that much of a fee the savings gets to. So that's why we say on your first issue of the two million, that we would do a fifty percent reduction in fees. And again, keeping in mind, we don't collect the fee or collect any money until we sell bonds.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. Also, under public comment, we have a presentation. If you'd like to come up and talk to us for a minute, please? And we welcome you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Superintendent Pollard, and guests. We got a quick request. Yogi Poe is a graduate of Paris High School as well. So I know a lot of people out here. And what we came for simply, and hopefully you can see this crew drawing the line. I didn't, I didn't do well in art here. I was an English person. But this is, this is where we are right now, Paris High School. This is the Paris High School administration building lot. It's just a lot there. Then there's a, there's a parking lot to the rear of this lot paved. I mean, it's blacktop. And our request simply is that from Henderson Street, this is Seventh Street, from Henderson Street, we have the property right here at three nineteen. And it runs back and then it ails into this area. And there's a gate there that's been there for decades. We bought, our family bought this as an option. And the lady that attended high school here still lives at three twenty-one. And they had both these houses. But at any, any rate, we were looking for a better access or an optional access to get to the rear of this property through this gate. And it's, the high school has this lot right here. And there's, there's a lot of other blacktop areas down in there, but we won't get into that. We can enter this property through Singer Alley, which is not pictured here, next to Zion Baptist Church. And then there's Conley Alley, that's one, one entryway up off A Street. But it would be helpful at times to be able to enter off Henderson Street and through this kind of like a little narrow gateway into this back lot and here. So that's, that's basically in a nutshell, the request. And the superintendent and I talked about this, he's in lawn care, landscaping. I do building services. So we were interested also at some point, this got nothing to do with our request, something we intend to do anyway. So not trying to influence a yes or no. But we were raised at Old School. And there are people that come through here without permission, obviously. And we just like to do it the right way, just come and say, we'd like to be able to have access to get through here. It gives us options beyond the Singer and Conley Alley. And getting back to another point I was trying to make is that in, in, inasmuch as he has his business, I have mine, we'll be using this lot back here for storage and tools, et cetera, et cetera. So we'd like to work at Paris High School also for some apprenticeship situations on a limited basis with some students, or where it would be in conjunction with what we do. Because there was one little fact to figure out there. In, I think it was oh seven, twenty oh seven, was the first time that, no, I'm sorry, twenty thirteen, did my numbers transpose. First time in history that building starts were down in the United States because of the lack of skilled labor. And of course, a lot of the trades are not taught in schools anymore. You don't have industrial arts and all that kind of thing. And so I think we can augment that situation, help it by working with some of the students here. We try to do things in an environment, a friendly way. And you can recycle a lot of the materials that are typically gone to a landfill or whatever in the landscaping business. And some of it in the building services industry can be recycled into things that actually help shrubbery, vegetables, lawns grow a lot faster and a lot more efficiently. So we're basically here, as I said, for permission on access. Secondly, on down the road, we'd like to come back and present a ton of man on down the road for apprenticeship. Sure. Basically, the property, if you, if you've had a chance to go back over there, it's starting to become a little unkept. And we're trying to hopefully in an attempt to keep transients and unwanted desirables from loitering down in there and destroying the property. And then the process in incremental steps, be able to incorporate that back into the students where they can see where maybe somebody else looks at something as waste, where if you trim some limbs, do some yard waste collection, what you can turn that into and what they can represent back to the community. I mean, you can start talking about being self-sufficient with gardening, just little, not, not anything over complicated. You know, we could probably go with as maybe middle school age to high school age. Those kids that are, you know, worthy of those rewards and wanting to learn stuff and just try to help increment those things back into the community, basically, is what we're trying to get permission to do. So that it, it doesn't fall totally on the school and everybody can kind of, it can kind of be like a community project, even though you only see us two right here. But we're, that's what we're trying to incorporate that into. It's kind of being a good neighbor. And he makes a point that we discussed, and I think superintendent and I discussed it too, that when you have, I know you're going to use that for parking, I think for ballgames, which is good. But when you have a presence continually like through the week or whatever, people have a tendency not to hang out when there's, there's traffic through there and there's some stewardship over the area. But if it's just sitting there, well, you know, just start parking there and then trash and stuff in there and so forth. So we've been doing a lot of cleaning up on the back end of that property as well as the, the parking lot and so forth. So I think it'd be, it'd be something to be a move in the right direction. So simple request, we want to keep it short, we're done, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kenny?
Yeah, this, this Louis Emmons, this is about an easement, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is about an easement?
Basically an easement, yeah, yeah.
I'll jump in here real quick. I talked with the board attorney today about this. And he recommended that we stay away from the word easement. That gets into whole legal indeed, if they sold the property, would transfer. This would be more of a facility use. They would have permission to use it in exchange for some upkeep. Something that could be revoked at any point.
Well, that's kind of like what I was going, what I was getting at. Because an easement changes everything. An agreement between the school and Mr. Henry would be more applicable in this situation, correct?
Yes.
For just playing, okay.
Kenny, do you all have your own special insurance for your business?
Yeah, general liability. And we'll have to have somebody look at that as far as crossing property. I know when you cross properties, it's like the sidewalk out in front of your house. Somebody falls, then, you know, your homeowners comes into play. So in this case, it would be general liability. We hope we can sit down and figure out the nuts and bolts of that, you know, as far as making sure that all liability is covered. Now, I don't know if that would be partially the schools and us or a mix. I have no idea, honestly, I haven't looked at it.
If we go with this, how would that affect Zion Baptist Church, who also from time to time uses that lot in the back? You know, they come down, they park?
Yeah, I think all we're doing is giving them access as needed. I'm not saying this is, it's a three, it's not, we're not trying to rent a bunch of parking spaces from the.
We want to be using property, other than, and we talked about this before, right here at the gate, there are several spaces right across here. Maybe temporarily, like for an hour or something, a vehicle might be somewhere in here. But this whole area, you take, go and take a walk and look at it, it's, it's a pretty big area. But it would just only be here. And that would just be, you know, not a permanent thing. It's just basically to, to have access and to hear another option. You've got these other two up here off A Street.
Basically, the motion item later in the agenda just authorizes me to move forward if you're all interested. So if you all give the go-ahead to pursue that, then I'll reach out to the board attorney and Mr. Kenny, and we'll come to an agreeable product. But I just didn't want to go there unless you are on board with us. So that's why we brought him in for questions, to get overall understanding of what we're talking about.
Okay, so you just want access on the, and in exchange, you'll kind of keep things kind of picked up?
Yeah. Let's, let's start and get a little.
I have.
A couple, three weeks ago and then look at it now. You'll, you'll see a marked difference, so. And then there's still a lot yet to do down at the bottom quadrant of the access. Somebody's dumped some debris down there, some trees and land.
Well, we don't really use it a lot. There usually is debris and, and other things that should be there, I guess, where people congregate or.
Yeah, and it's, and it's at the point now where the blacktop is at the point where it's going to need some TLC in the next year or so, maybe before. But anyway, be good to seal coat some of that or whatever. Because the blacktop itself is in good shape for the most part. But there, you know, ideas, time, elements, you have to do certain things. So if you'd be willing to sit down and talk about, talk about those things, just keep it, keep it up, you know, keep it up.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. All right, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Okay, we'll go along now to C, the presentation by Mr. Lou Johnson. This is in regards to some upgrades in the Fine Arts Center.
And I'll just quick, quick intro, Lou. He's taken the initiative from the get-go, you know, being a Paris grad and an employee here that wants us to look, wants things to look nice and presentable. And he did some reaching out on his own to find a vendor to give us some bids on the curtains that need to be upgraded in the Fine Arts Center, as well as a projector screen. He secured one of those. I talked with Mr. Emmons about this previously. He recommended that we get some additional bids, and that's what we've got in the, an action item to pursue more of those. But I think, you know, for a reasonable amount of money, we can upgrade that, that space with just those two items. But I think, you know, for a reasonable amount of money, we can upgrade that, that space with just those two items. Uh, cause people are using this building, these buildings all the time. We got an EDA meeting in here tomorrow, second one in a month. They want to do a, a, uh, community, uh, election committee where people come in with candidates for them. They want to do that in the Fine Arts Center. So if we're going to be the community school, we want it to look nice. So I, I want to say Louie, thanks and you tell me a little bit about what, what you've done.
He said it all.
I know, I'm glad he got that. No, tell us.
No, I just, I just feel like that, you know, I've been here for 15 years and our auditorium is an outstanding auditorium. We have a lot of people that come in from out of town, out of state, and the first thing they say to me is, wow, this auditorium is nice to be a, a small school. So I just think, you know, it's time. But so we have a lot of people used it, but he did say that, you know, once we get this new in there, that it's going to change a lot about who's going to use it. And I just feel like this, we, we, we need it now.
We need to get rid of the red curtains.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we've been, we've been in need of the curtains.
Took time to clean out all that back.
Yeah.
Cause it was all nasty back in the back. So I took one whole day and cleaned out everything in the back that we didn't need. So now we have honors day up on the stage. You know, those people that come, they can skip out, but then they got to see all that nasty mess. I mean, they got to see the bad stuff. That's, that's, that's part of it.
Right.
But it's, it's time.
What does our audio system look like there?
I was going to get to that. Well, well, what me and him talked about is first thing curtains, then audio, audio and lights maybe together. And the guy I've been talking to, which he said they do it all. So there's something that we wouldn't have to go to three, you know, two other companies. We can just stick with this one.
That would take.
And they'll take care of all of it. Yes, yes. And I, and the reason why I went to them because that, that's the original curtains that are in the auditorium now.
Oh, nineteen sixty-six.
Yes, yes. That's what I told him. Hey man, look in, look in your books and see if you got nineteen sixty-six Paris Independent Schools. I said, no. But yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, it, it's time for a change in there because our seats are still great, carpet's still great. This, when people walk in off the street now and they're like, first thing, what's the first thing they see? Uh, ugly car, uh, ugly, uh.
Curtains.
Curtains. So.
So Lou, what, what do you think the time span to get this all done would be?
He told, he told me, uh, I talked to him, I told him, I said, we got a meeting on the twentieth. And if they approve it, he said he could probably get it done by Thanksgiving.
That would be nice.
And I said, Lou, I said, if you're doing that, that's, that's going to be awesome. But this is only the curtains now. Cause we're going to do stage at a time unless you all want to go ahead and get the whole shebang done. I can tell him when he comes in, you know, if he gets the job, to give it a, give us an estimate, a quote on lights and sound.
Have you and Mr. McCauley looked at the cost of materials, labor?
He's got it all. He's got, he's got.
It's in the door code.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got it all on there right now.
And, and I really believe that on the short term, the, the immediate need is the curtains and the screen. Uh, we have an audio system. It's not what we want to end up being, but it's functional and usable now. So I feel like, uh, with, with the uncertainty with the funding from state that we might perceive down the road, it's, I, I feel comfortable with us spending around this twenty thousand dollar ballpark figure at this time. And then if we see we're in a better spot, it might be more significant upgrades down the road. But I think for now it's a, a, a good, a good spot to be at. And that's where I would prioritize. The curtains first and then the screen and then, then the lighting and then the audio.
Yeah, okay.
It also needs painting. Is that the original paint from nineteen sixty-six?
You can't.
It looks dull and dingy, you know?
Then I retire then if we paint. Are you coming back to help the paint?
Hey, I, I can take a paint brush and start painting or a roller, or I could supervise. I'll supervise.
There you go.
Oh no, we got to put a brush in your hand.
But, but seriously, have we looked into painting the bill, the, the auditorium as well? Have we ever looked at that?
There'd be another, there'd be another step down, down the line. Like I said, I really feel like if you come in now, the curtains have to be updated soon if we're going to welcome people there.
Right.
Green is used almost every time someone comes, uh, and then I think we move from there in priority.
I mean, I don't know how they've not fallen down from like dry rot.
There are, they are now. We got them pinned up now. That's not professional. It don't, it don't look good.
The only thing that I was, uh, asking about is make sure we have competitive bids and, and if they're going to do both of them, maybe we can get a bundle package for both items and then save a little bit of money on that end of it. I know we want quality, but we still got to look for the value as well.
And I, I agree. I think that's a good point. Uh, we're going to do some investigating and get a couple more bids. Uh, but still would like to move fairly quickly on it. So once we get those in, uh, we can take some.
Don't we have to have extra bids if it's over a certain amount of money?
Below that.
Or below, okay.
Without, with the lights and the, with the lights and the sound, he's going, I told him, I said, if it's any way that you can put that as a package deal instead of individual, because, you know, it could get expensive. You get one and then, then you get another one. So he said he'll try his best to put those two together.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thanks, Lou.
All right.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also for public comment, we got Ms. Glenna Limble's going to talk to us for a minute. Glenna?
Yes, I'm here.
Turn your time over to you.
I, uh, received an email from a homeowner in town and I hope that each of the board members, you've read the letter. I think it was sent to you with a copy of the, the lot, the parcel showing what Mr. Kaiser was talking about. Has every, everyone read it? Because I really don't want to repeat it again. I do want to say that there are back taxes on this and let's see, eleven years. And the total is eight hundred and fifty dollars. So that's what we're looking at. He wants all taxes exonerated. And then also that would be, um, annexed onto his property for next year, which would make his assessment go up. And then he would be paying essentially for the lot and it would be put back on the tax revenue. And then Mr. McCauley said that he had talked to the, if you want to add.
Yeah, I talked to the board attorney, uh, and I can fill you in now if you'd like. Um, he just recommended that, uh, on, on the face of it, it's, it makes sense to, uh, forgive that in the past so that we would actually start receiving, uh, tax revenue on the property. Uh, the only thing to be aware of is, you know, setting a, a precedent and, and if that's, uh, if that's something that we would want to undertake, we, the board is the only one that can release that lien. Um, so that it's, like I said, on the face, the, the, the value, the money, it's not worth trying to get the back taxes. It would make sense to roll forward like this, but you just, you gotta be mind, we gotta be mindful of the, of the precedent set by that. So.
Uh, Glenna, has he also approached the city about this and I guess depending on his family?
Yes, he, he will have to approach the city and the county, and I do not know whether or not he's already done that. But as he stated in the letter, uh, P and Z will have to agree to this also for the annexing of his property. So, um, you know, there's a lot of things that would have to be approved. And then the city or the county may not approve, may, may want all the taxes paid in full. But I will tell you that the Rainies, and I know a lot of you all know them, Mr. Rainey was a barber here in town. And, and, and both of them are deceased and their daughters, Kath, Kim and Robin, they are never, I'll just be honest with you, Kim and Robin will never pay these taxes. Kim even has a tax bill, uh, that she never pays. It's a lot and she doesn't pay it either. So, um, it, it will never be paid.
Well, I think we ought to agree to it, you know, on the contingency that the city does annex it, you know, if it gets annexed and, I mean, I just think it's a win-win situation for us and for them as well, you know?
I agree.
I will be like the hardball, you know, people, you know, the community's done so much for us. I think it's, you know, I just think it's a win-win situation.
I agree.
Janice, I have to disagree with you on that. Just because the mere fact that the city or the county has a, a, uh, procedure for this, if there's back taxes due on a property, then that goes up for a lien for a third party. And that's the way that it's always been done. And if we decide that, hey, we want to do this, there's going to be a lot of people asking, hey, why don't you forgive my taxes then? So there's, I mean, there's a chance that, uh, Mr. Kaiser can go out and pay those taxes and get the property. He's going to get a, a win-win situation if he does that anyway. And then he can put the lien on the, on the property and, and, or on the taxes and get the money back from, uh, the Rainies. I mean, sorry, but, uh, I would like my taxes forgiven too, if, if, uh, if I'm, I'm delinquent. So, uh, I, I'm going to say no to this because it's going to set a precedence that I don't think we want to open.
Well, and then also there is, I mean, maybe you all could just set a flat amount to pay. You know, just not exonerate all the taxes, but say, hey, um, tell them that we have to have three or maybe half of it, say four hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I thought of that possibility too.
Well, and like, we've got an action item down there later to discuss it and that might be, I'll interject some things in, in about this. Thanks, Lou.
Let's move along with the I M D, uh, consistent agenda. Uh, I'll read these and then, uh, when we get ready to make them available, just get them found. A, consider a motion to approve fundraiser in the past for long, chilling and trying to fail to participate and trying to pick up. And B, is consider a motion to approve fundraiser in class and mass to help with COVID-related expenses. Anybody have any questions about any one of these fundraisers?
Who's, who's doing B?
Uh, central, central office.
Central office, okay, okay. So, uh, the reason I ask, I just want to make sure that we have the right type of mask.
Right.
That would be used by our students and faculty and not something that's not going to last a day.
Right.
Okay.
I wear my mask after a while when I work at night. So now they have more kids asking me how can they get them?
So that.
Even the parents that are asking how can they get them?
Yeah, so they'll be, yeah, just call central office or email Jennifer and she'll, we can mail it or they can pick it up.
Okay, so do you have a motion to sit with these fundraisers?
Motion.
Motion Ricky, sir, your second.
Second Sharon.
Sharon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, all business. Hey, is there a motion to approve tuition agreement addendum in Bourbon County Schools?
So this is in your board folder and this is the, uh, tuition agreement that, you know, that expired in June that we've gone back and forth with our attorney, their attorney, try to iron out the details. And this basically just rolls that, uh, forward. It has a few considerations in it. Um, there's still things that, to be perfectly honest, that the, our, our board attorney doesn't, doesn't love in it. Um, to be honest with you, but at this point, I feel like it's in our best interest, and I told him this today, uh, to move forward. So we have a tuition agreement that gets us through this school year. And then we revisit that with the, with the new board attorney, uh, before the end of the school year for next year. So, um, that's, that's what I'm recommending. He's aware of that and understands that, but it's, it's in your folder. And Bourbon County's already signed off on it, so it would be effective or active today retro to July one.
Did you allow the change to work this out where it's in the goal packets?
Mm-hmm.
See about your question about concerns, library, people follow up, probably just kind of go, I see it's in, uh, so do I have a motion to approve the tuition agreement addendum with Bourbon County Schools?
Uh, Andrew, you're muted. I can't, nobody can hear you.
I am sorry. I did that long ago.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So do I have someone, uh, need a, a motion to approve the tuition agreement addendum with Bourbon County Schools? Do I have a motion?
Louie Emmons, motion.
Louie, motion. Do I hear a second?
Second Ricky.
Ricky, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're going to move along now to new business. Uh, item A, consider a motion to approve contract with Compass Municipal Advisors LLC as fiscal agent, which Mr. Anthony went over all that with us a while ago. I think we, I think he answered our questions pretty well. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to that or ask?
I think maybe at this time, we, if we go with this, we want to, may want to say, uh, a contract for at least two years, two school years, or do we need it longer or shorter?
I don't know that we have to tie it in. I mean, like, like they said, we can leave at any, we can move from it at any point. So I think we just enter this, uh, let them get, the, the two reasons I think they can help us is one, I think they can help us save money and be smart with our bonding down the road. And then I think they can help us with the nickel, uh, if that's something we want to pursue sooner or later. Uh, and that's, you know, if that doesn't work out, then we can move on if we want to, but I really think.
I know it usually takes people and organizations at least two years to get to know each other fairly well and.
And I feel like I know Dr. Strong very well, uh, already and have a relationship and I, and I, we've talked through these two, like the, the bonding issues and the, the nickel at length and we'll continue to do so. Uh, I think that's what we, I think they'll be a good group to help lead us through that.
Okay. Okay.
I salute them that we approved.
Sharon makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Uh, Louie Emmons, second.
Louie seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Item.
We're going to work you hard.
Okay, item B, consider a motion to prove, to approve BG one for the Paris Elementary School Roof Project.
And this is the roof that we, it's been on hold for a little while. We put some, but. Yeah, yeah, the BG's in the packet and that's, it's already spelled out in there what those costs will be. Uh, and the, what of the restricted and the S F C C funds that we can use to help cover it. So it's all in the, in the folder. Uh, we've talked about this before. Uh, but we're hopeful that if we can move forward today, we could potentially catch some decent weather and knock it out before spring. If not, it would be a spring project. So.
Okay.
So he's already been.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So consider a motion to approve the BG one for Paris Elementary School Roof Project. Do I hear a motion? Ricky, make the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. C, consider a motion to authorize superintendent to negotiate agreement with the Henry Kenny and his associates. They just talked about what they were wanting to do, which I think sounds good.
And basically I would, we'd finalize, once you're all good to go with it, I'll follow up with the board attorney. I just didn't want to spend any money or time to, to draft anything or, or work through this until I knew you were on board. So if you're on board, we'll, and, and approve this motion, we can, I'll, I'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Doesn't sound too complicated.
I'll make the motion that we, um, authorize you to negotiate an agreement with Mr. Kenny and his associates. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Sharon, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I M D, consider a motion to approve. Okay, I M D, consider a motion to approve job description for district technology coordinator.
Alright, so.
Mr. McCully.
Yeah, most districts have, that's what their, their lead tech person is named in most districts. We've had a tech director. Uh, it's just, it's changing that, that title, uh, for the, the new person we've hired that's actually a classified employee uh, for that position. But either way, that's, that's what almost every district has. It's just changing that title on the job description.
Louis Emmens, motion.
Louis makes a motion. Do I hear a second? Ricky, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, approve updated 2021 salary schedule, district technology coordinator for 230 days.
That's currently at 240 days. Uh, we believe with the assistant position that was named at, at last meeting, uh, that we can cut those days back and still fully support, uh, the district as well as save a little bit of money as well.
So do I hear a motion to approve the updated 2021 salary schedule?
Louis Emmens, motion.
Alright, Louis made the motion. Ricky seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to F, consider a motion, and this is just to authorize superintendent to receive and accept bids to replace the curtains and the screen uh, at the Fine Arts Center, which Mr. Johnson just talked to us about.
And this would allow, if this, if this is approved, will allow me to, uh, uh, go ahead and move forward instead of waiting till November to do something if we, and I'll keep you guys abreast of this individually, uh, once those come in, but, uh, this will allow us to take action sooner than later.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve Mr. McCully to receive and accept bids to replace the curtains and the screen at the Fine Arts Center?
I do, Janice Shepherd.
Sharon made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I do, Janice Shepherd.
Janice, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, consider a motion to create two full-time substitute teaching positions for the district.
So currently, uh, we have about $40,000 each year budgeted for substitute teachers. Um, as you might imagine, it's hard to find them at this time. So I, I believe this might be a, a way that we can, uh, be more attractive to, to candidates. So if we find someone that is a good fit for the school, uh, if we can tell them, we can guarantee them a position every single day, which we almost always need. And in the event we didn't, there would be other things they could do as far as interventions and pullouts. Uh, I just think this would be a, a good use of those funds because right now we're not spending any money on substitutes. So while that would normally be a good thing, it, it just means we can't find them right now. So, uh, this is a, hopefully a creative way we can find that. We may or may not fill these. We may find some people that can start doing it for shorter term, but I at least want to have this option if we find the perfect candidate.
Do I hear a motion to consider to create the two full-time substitute teaching positions for our district? Ricky, motion. Do I hear a second?
Louis Emmens.
Louis, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, H, consider a motion to exonerate back taxes on Scott Avenue. Do we need to have some discussion on this?
I like this idea, but I also agree with Louis that it may open a can of worms. And I'm not sure we can really do it legally. I'm, I just don't know enough.
Our board attorney says that we can do it. Um, it's just like Louis brought up, there's some precedent and there's other entities. You know, we could also wait and see if they get every other governmental entity that they owe taxes on. If they, if they all waive it, we could come in on the back end potentially next month.
That may be best to see what, what the city says and what, uh, the county says and what P N Z says.
Yeah, because there may not be any need to exonerate if no one else is, so.
Yeah, that's true.
What, Louis, we can't hear you?
I think we table it.
I, I, I was just exactly what I was saying. I think we ought to table this.
We need to, to, to tell the person who brought this to our attention that we are still interested in his suggestion, but we are, we need to take some further steps before we can make a commitment.
Everybody agrees with that? Okay, so we won't do a motion on it. We'll just, we'll just make a motion to table this.
We're going to even.
Okay, we'll do this table. Okay, let's move along to item I, consider a motion to amend student code of conduct for 2021 school year. Stephen?
And all this does is, is add, uh, one line in two different times. Uh, basically what we've run into with COVID-19 and, and all the line says, due to COVID-19, in lieu of suspension, virtual Greyhound Academy could be assigned. So instead, and, and our board attorney said this is a great idea so that we're not just telling a kid that they might, student, they may be suspended for a few days. Uh, they instead be in the virtual academy and would still be able to continue courses. So without being whatever the disruption might be in the school. If they went longer term, that would be something to be, be brought to me, uh, if we're talking about a longer term assignment to virtual school due to behavior. So it just adds the same line twice in the, in the student code of conduct.
I think it's an excellent idea. Because we don't want, you know, we might have some discipline problems, but we don't want them to get behind in their education.
Right. I think this is, it's the future. One of the good things that'll come from all this, I think.
Yeah. Anybody got any questions about that? So let's consider a motion to amend the student code of conduct for 2021 school year. Do I hear a motion?
Louis Emmens, motion.
Louis makes a motion. Do I hear a second? Second Ricky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. J, consider a motion of superintendent's evaluation for 2021 school year.
And this is just approving the same process we did last year, just a vote to approve that that's what we'll follow. Uh, and I've made an emphasis on, on two areas. Uh, one, I believe for myself would be instructional leadership. I want to continue to grow in. Uh, the other one would be collaborative leadership, which would be the feedback that, part of the feedback that you all gave me at the last, was engaging some of our, uh, non-English speaking families. And I want to continue to, to build upon that. We're, you know, we've had, uh, town halls in that format this year and we're trying to expand that. So you're just approving that process that we'll do next June.
Sounds good. So do I hear a motion? Uh, the superintendent's evaluation for 2021 school year?
Day, Janice Shepherd.
Do I hear a second?
Janice.
Janice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to come down to the superintendent's report. Uh, we got four items here. The first one is new board attorney and we'll let Mr. McCully talk to us about that.
As you guys are aware, uh, Mr. Chinewas office is closing December 31st. Uh, it's a, it's big news across the state. Most of the CARA laws have Robert Chinewas somewhere mentioned down in the drafting note. So, uh, it's a big deal. Uh, I've spoken with his son Grant, who's part of the firm as well, but the firm is going away. Uh, Grant is going to, is, is in, working towards, uh, work, get, joining on an additional firm, uh, down the road. Uh, once that's happened, we obviously consider that, uh, with some, with some, uh, familiarity, but probably next, the, the November meeting, we'll do, we would do an RFQ uh, to get some, uh, potential people to, that might, potential firms that we could work with and we could explore those rates and how much they cost based on what services they might bring. So, uh, that's just an update. There's no, nothing to do this month on it, but I wanted to let you know I was on top of that, uh, and that, that'll be on, uh, next month's agenda. So I'll go ahead and tell Jennifer to put on next month's agenda.
Okay. And item B, in-person school update.
So, so far this has been a, a fantastic start to in-person school. Uh, we came back from fall break and we were right around 80% of our students are in person. Uh, enrollment continues to go up. Uh, Jennifer and I are just a handful of people away from having a, having a party. Uh, I'll share, I'll be sure to share that, uh, if we hit a, a threshold and I, I want to get some data together for how long it's been since we've hit that. So that's exciting, uh, that we're seeing some growth that's tied into some of the, the bonding stuff that we want to do down the road that we may need to do and I would love to need to. Uh, so it, it's going really well. It's, it's, it's extremely, uh, taxing and stressful on staff right now and I, and I still think families as well. It's just, uh, so if you, if you get a chance to, to see a teacher, see a staff member and can give them an encouraging word, it has been absolutely the most challenging time ever in education, uh, that, that I've been around. Uh, and our, our staff's doing an amazing job stepping up there, but it's tough, like it, it is tough. So uh, kudos to them for continuing to push through it. Uh, the next thing I want to touch on is the, uh, the metric that the state has, has rolled out with the red and the orange and yellow and green counties. Um, spoke with the board attorney today, uh, explained to him the plan. I shared with you all some of the parent communications I've sent out saying that that color coded map would be a point of reference, a piece of data that we would use. Uh, and our board attorney was in line with that. It's ultimately my decision, like it's a snow day and some people are going to agree or disagree. So if, if we are, if we do get to red, that doesn't mean that we would automatically shut down school then or, or next week. And I tried to communicate that to parents and I would do that again. And, and I know that may not be a entirely happy one for everyone here at that point, but that's, that's where we are. Because there will be other factors that will be considered where, where the cases are happening, if, if there are any in our school. Things of that nature. If it's, so those are the things that'll be considered. Uh, I've tried to be transparent with the community and parents about that process. Um, it's tough. Uh, we want to be open to in-person. We know how much of a benefit that is to our kids, even though we have a good uh, online version. In-person is just a totally different ballgame and, and we, we're glad that we've been able to still do it, spread kids out. We're using this space as a classroom every day, uh, so we can spread kids out. So I just, I want to give you an update, see if you have any questions about how it's going so far.
People I've talked to are seem very pleased with the way that we're doing things.
I mean, we're one of the few that are welcoming all students back five days a week. Uh, there's just not many districts doing that at all schools. So, uh, I'm, we're, it's taken a a ton of work from our staff to make that work and to keep kids safe.
Well, I'm going to tell you as a parent and a board member, I'm glad to see this because uh, being a parent, my son is very relieved that he is back in school. Because it's taken a lot of pressure off of him. Uh, believe it or not, he was, he was stressed out about being in this, uh, being in our house 24/7. So he's very happy about going back to school. Thank you.
And our staff is to be commended for the great work they're doing. This board really appreciates our staff. Okay. Uh, item C, FEMA update.
Yeah, I touched on that a little bit earlier, but we've submitted some, some bills for, for reimbursement. We'll get another round out in the next week or so and we'll just see where those go. I'm, I'm hopeful that if we can get a significant portion of that, we can talk in the next two or three board meetings about, uh, maybe, maybe doing some, some, uh, doing some things with our budget. So I won't leave you with that for now.
Okay. Alright, and item D, which I think all of us dread, Mrs. Yvonne Beagle.
Yeah, and we, we don't typically do something for this for someone in, in the, in middle of year or in, in career, but I, I know she's had such a close relationship with all of us on the board, all of you all. Wanted to give a, a recognize Yvonne for all the work she's done here and, and we've got on behalf of the board here that we want to share. So thank you, Jennifer. And if Yvonne, if you would come up and if the board would like to say anything to you, they can too. And, uh, we've got a certificate of appreciation or something.
Thank you for all that you've done for us.
We are going to miss you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just tell you that, uh, being at Paris was a really special thing for me? And this has, this has been one of the hardest things for me is, is leaving. But God knows why he opens doors. So he gave me an opportunity and, and I felt the call. And so I'm headed to a mission field. They're trying to take a program from scratch on the west end of Louisville and they're trying to revitalize it completely. Similar to what happened when I first came here. When I first came here, they were just trying to launch uh, the one-to-one program. They were trying to launch something called Fusion. They wanted me to teach kids to use technology. And I feel like in the course of the last five years that I've been here, that we have gone leaps and bounds technology-wise. And I feel really happy about the state that I'm leaving the district in. And I'm really thrilled that I'm handing the keys over to Kelly Weiss, who's a really good guy. And he's going to take you guys even further than I was able to take you guys. So I just, you don't know how much I appreciate it. I'm glad the kids are back in person. The esports team tonight scored 97 points to 23 against Graves County. And so Paris is a special place. This is always going to feel like home to me. And so I'm just thanking you guys for all the opportunities being here at the Paris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Move along.
Yeah, we can, Jelly, why don't you come on up here real quick?
Come up and introduce yourself.
So, so the board, the, the ones that are virtual can see you too.
So we can put an A with a face.
Want to keep this on or take it off? Okay. So, um, my name is Kelly Weiss. So I'm going to be, uh, taking over for Yvonne. Um, she's um, done a wonderful job. I've been working with her the past, uh, two days and then the two days, or a few days before that. Um, she's, I mean, she's done a wonderful job in this district so far that, and I've seen. And I just hope to continue that and, and, uh, keep on going with, uh, the goals that she set and uh, down the road, just keep on, keep on going for Paris, so.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you. Welcome to our school.
Nice to be here.
Did she tell you her hours, by the way?
Um, yes, unfortunately. I'm, I'm kind of accustomed to those myself. So, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just the, uh, the nature of the beast when it comes to technology. Sometimes you, you actually, sometimes you get, you get a lot more done when people aren't in the building, unfortunately. So, but yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Moving along, out of board comments. Louis, do you have anything you'd like to? Any comments tonight?
I just want to say, uh, thank the district for, um, all the work we did so far getting into the COVID, uh, uh, return. It's been a very good success. I hear a lot of good things in the community and I just want to make sure that the staff is commended for what they've been doing. And also as a parent, I want to thank the, uh, the district as well. Thank you.
Janice?
Well, I want to reiterate what he said, you know, I just, uh, again, I'm blown away about our staff. Uh, everyone involved to ensure success of our students and staff one by one. I want to thank the community. You know, the people that donated the mask. I mean, I'm just, I guess I get, I just get overwhelmed and just thinking how many people are supportive of us. So thank you all.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Ricky? Nothing tonight, Ricky?
Oh, one thing, uh, I had two kids asking how can we can't have salads?
We're, we're working on that.
Okay. Sharon?
Um, I'm just going to add to what has already been said, a, a number of people in the community. Um, I'm just gonna add to what has already been said. A, a number of people in the community are amazed that we are able to go to school in person five days. And they are also pleased with our virtual academy because they have grandchildren in other counties, uh, where the virtual is not working well and they are not in-person learning, doing any in-person learning at all. So everybody's sort of keeping an eye on our system and they want to know what we are doing and how we are doing it. And I just told them to call you. So.
It's been, it's been a lot of work. And, uh, like I said, you're all, the board's foresight years ago to get us to this point has, has helped to open those doors, so. Kudos.
Awesome. Uh, I got a couple of things. Uh, how are we with bus drivers? I saw where we had one that was out. I guess I'm gonna assume sick.
Yeah, well.
Kind of.
Yeah, using sick days.
Okay.
Family issue. Uh, they, uh, we've got two other subs that are partly here and there. Uh, and then we have one that should be finishing up in the next couple of weeks, a new, potential new driver. That would be, he's a teacher at the elementary school already, so be here every day. Um, so that's, that's always a challenge is, is finding, uh, bus drivers. But we're having mon, we've got monitors on every bus. We're doing temperature checks on every bus. We're sanitizing. Uh, it's, that, just, just another one of the, every, every single staff member I know is go, is doing more than they did last year. A lot more. And it's just, just, it's taxing, but it's, uh, it just shows a lot of what we're, we're made of here.
You're going above and beyond.
Absolutely.
That's awesome. Um, how's attendance at the football games? How many more home games do we have? I know we have to limit it to how many can be there.
The, the last home game's on the 30th as of right now.
October?
Yes, and it's scheduled to be homecoming and senior, uh, it's against Nicholas County, who is a red county at this time. Um, I think their population is, is small enough that they could, could come out of that at that point. Um, we also have, if, if for some reason something came up and we were unable to, to play that day, uh, we have that next week that's still open to schedule another opponent. So, uh, we're still at this time, you know, it depends on the numbers across the state and how, how different counties treat this. Uh, but we're, we're still optimistic to, to finish out our, our seasons there and our, our soccer teams wrap up their seasons. Uh, and we're, we're getting ready for winter sports now.
Okay. Um, it's kind of exciting to see the governor wearing the, um, Paris Pride, Paris High School mask on his, his line.
I, I missed it. I was in a, I was in a training or something. I saw Gloria Allen posted it and I was like, I gotta go find that. screenshot and that just blew up, so. That was real cool. And that was Jennifer's, uh, idea. She took, she worked up and, and sent it. So those have been, those have been a huge hit. Like, that's been great.
Awesome. And the last thing I wanted to, to bring up is, um, I hope that our staff and everybody here that's on the board will, um, remember Alexis Selem in your prayers. She's got some serious health issues and I know her personally really well. She's a, she's a sweet, sweet young woman and I think, um, if, a lot of prayers would be greatly appreciated that, that she will get better. And that's all I've got. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Ricky made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Louis Emmens.
Second by Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, meeting is adjourned.
Have a good one, everybody.